Welcome everyone to tonight's special board meeting. Thank you for attending. And for those of you that would like to join us, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God.
I will now take a motion to adopt our agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the agenda has been adopted. And now, I'd like to call forward Jan Bader, who's Program and Policy Development Manager for the City of Vancouver. We'll have a discussion about culture, arts, and heritage. Jan?
I guess I need to do this with the microphone so you get me on tape?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to come to the meeting tonight. So, the reason I'm here is the City of Vancouver is developing a new Culture, Arts, and Heritage Plan. We have a current plan, it's 21 years old, and was largely unimplemented because fairly shortly after it got adopted by the City Council, we laid off all the staff that would have done the implementation, always a problem. And then, not too long after that, we, in our code, we have a cultural committee, commission, and shortly after we laid off all the staff, we also dissolved the cultural commission. So, it's still in code, it just has no members at this point. So, one of the action items in the current strategic plan for the City of Vancouver was to develop a new Cultural, Arts, and Heritage Plan. So, we've been working on that since last fall. I have a 26-member advisory committee that's working with me on that. We tried to get a broad cross-representation of heritage organizations, arts organizations, cultural organizations. Don Nelson from the Evergreen School District's been your representative on the advisory committee. He's been great to work with. And it's been great to have both school districts there to just learn about what they're doing as well. So, we're at the point now where we've got a draft of the plan, and we have a draft of the action items for the plan. And so, what we're doing is going out to groups that are sort of the natural stakeholders in the work that we're doing, to just get some feedback about, did we miss anything? Is there anything in here that, you know, you wouldn't want to see in a plan like this? And just some basic feedback on what we're doing. A little bit of background, so, we are working with a consultant on this plan. Unfortunately, no local consultants responded to our RFP, so they're out of Seattle. So, this has been an interesting process because as they're putting together what they think should be the action items, I mean, they don't know our community, and so there were a few things in there that were like, oh, nope, 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 nope. So, we hope we ended up with a list of action items that's going to be, you know, some immediate sort of short-term things we can implement, and then some that'll be longer term. And as you look at this, the filter for this is this is the City of Vancouver as an organization's action plan. So, there's a lot of really great stuff in the area of heritage and the arts that's going on throughout our community. Evergreen's got some great programs, you know, Vancouver School District, the Magenta Theatre, the Kiggins, you know, all the stuff going on at the National Historic Site. So, there's a lot of stuff going on already. We're not trying to, in any way, diminish that or usurp that. What we're looking for is ways the city can be value-added to help grow that segment of our community. So, as the mayor said the other night, there's something like 51 action steps in this. It's, so, we managed to squish them all down onto one page. The plan itself is obviously a lot longer than that. It's got some background information, some more details on all of these. In fact, this isn't even the exact wording because it would not fit on one page. We broke the plan into three different elements. The first one is building the capacity of the cultural sector. So, when we brought our consultant on, one of the things I said is, the art community here sometimes struggles to work together and to really coalesce behind projects. And they said, that's true in every community. And now that we're six months into it, they're like, oh, you guys really need to work on building the capacity of that sector of your community. We're pretty good in the heritage area because we've got the National Park Service and the Historic Trust and the Historic Museum. But the cultural community definitely needs some capacity building. So, that's one of the areas that we feel like we can provide some leadership in and some help with. And you'll see that there's four objectives with a bunch of action steps in that area. It was kind of telling, the first meeting of the advisory committee, we were talking about sort of low-hanging fruit and things we could do immediately. And a lot of the art community just said, you guys just need to show up. And we don't see your elected officials at any of these events, we don't see your staff. And, you know, it's hard when you don't really have staff and a leader that can be devoted to that. The second element is strengthening Vancouver's cultural core. We have, you know, the downtown, we've got the Fort Vancouver National Historic Site, the waterfront that's developing, three really unique, great assets. And really, the consultants are really recommending we spend some more time developing those assets, and also developing the links between those so that pedestrians and automobile traffic can get easily between those three areas. So, again, some information on that. A few years ago, the City Council designated a downtown arts district. And we were really clear when we got asked to do this, that this was really going to be a ceremonial designation. There's no resources to really develop the arts district. So, one of the things we asked the consultants is to provide some specific recommendations on how we could more fully actualize an arts district downtown. So, there'll be, there's some recommendations related to that in here, and some related to the fort and the waterfront. And then, the last element of the plan is really space, space for display of art, making of art, performing of art. Because the community really feels like there's a shortage of that. I'm not sure there's necessarily such a, other than maybe performing arts space, such a shortage. It's just connecting up the people that are looking for space with the people that have space, and making those links. And also, maybe providing some assistance in, you know, what, how do you read a lease? And how do you, you know, what are the things you ask when you're looking to lease space? We just had a, the Gallery 360's been a tenant in the Slope House, which the city owns for a few years, and they've had to give notice because they were not financially able to pay the rent. And as one of my advisory committee members said, you really have to have sort of a secondary line of business that pays the rent so that you have the luxury of selling the art. And so, those kinds of, just not so much, you know, creating space, but creating linkages to space. So, what I wanted to ask tonight is, you know, if you have a chance to look this over, my contact information's on the bottom of the back page. If you have any suggestions, any areas you think we've missed the boat on. We're really interested in working with the school districts as we move forward with this. One of the, so, four of the key elements that we're hoping that we will be able to develop in the first year of this plan, and this is partly through Vancouver's strong effort, which Victoria was, is, has been a part of, is, we really, we've got to have a staff person. We used to have two full-time heritage staff and one full-time art and culture person. We don't have anything now. We have like, two hours a month of my time. That's what happens when you lay off the staff, and then, you know, they always say, oh, the program will go away. No, it just rolls uphill. So, we're hoping that we will be able to identify a way to fund a staff position. We'd like to restart the cultural commission so that, because one of the things we've learned from looking at best practices in other communities is that having that community commission or advisory committee that are volunteers is really important. We would also like to restart our cultural grant program. So, at its peak, we had $100,000 a year that we gave out to the cultural and art community through a series of small grants. Because with a lot of organizations, as you guys are aware, you know, sometimes $2,000 can make all the difference in getting you on to the next level. And then, the fourth thing I would really like to see happen is, we talk about our public art program, we don't actually have a public art program. We have a collection, but it has no guidelines and no scope of collection, and no ability to say to somebody, really, we don't, that piece of art doesn't really fit with our scope of collection. So, we have a rather eclectic collection. So, I really would like some funding to be able to create an actual public art program, and at its base, to actually have some maintenance money for the art we already own. So, those are the four key things that we're going to be advocating for in this first round. We are, so, the advisory committee's having their final meeting on the 19th of March, where they will hopefully sign off on the plan. So, if you have any feedback, it would be great to get it prior to then, so that it can be incorporated. And then, we're going to the City Council in a workshop with the final plan on the 9th of April, and then, hopefully, adoption by the City Council on April 16th. If there's a lot of feedback from council on the 9th that we need to incorporate, that might, that might get delayed. And with that, I promised I would keep this to just 10 or 15 minutes, so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
I have a question. I have a question. As a business owner downtown, of course, I like all the linkages to the historic reserve, the new waterfront, and then the historic part of downtown. But as a resident on the east side, and, you know, a board member, I'm not seeing, and I know things happen in phases, but it sometimes feels like the east side doesn't get things until the end, or even the north, you know, part of our community, is, is there a long-term kind of tentative plan about what's going to happen to bring arts and culture? I have to say, I love those concerts that, now that we have them over on this side, we, you know, really-
Right, so that was one step is-
And really appreciate that a lot, and take advantage of it.
So, one of the downsides of not really having a public art program is-
Right.
-all the new pieces of public art that we've done in the last 10 years have been in partnership with Vancouver's Downtown Association. So, we've done five new pieces, but they are the Downtown Association, so they're all located in the downtown. And for the partnership, they've gone through the whole process of selecting the artists, selecting the location, commissioning the art, and we've just essentially written a check. We don't have that kind of a partnership on the east side. We would love to see pieces of public art places other than downtown, but until we have somebody that can really manage that program, it's just really difficult to do.
I don't think a lot of people know that we have art, public art, in all of our schools. You know, that's part of the requirement when we build schools. We have some that are just spectacular, I mean, really. So, it might be kind of a cool thing to kind of give you an inventory, because some are outside, some are inside. But, I don't know, as we talk about public art, we have some examples on this side of town that I don't even know most people, if most people are really aware of it.
That would be great. We, I had an intern on, working on the art program from WSU last spring, and one of the things she did is update our public art map that identified all the city pieces of public art. So, that's online. But I've gotten a lot of response from the community about, why did you limit it to just city-owned public art? Because the Clark County Mural Society has a lot of murals downtown and out on Fourth Plain. So, we are, we would like to expand that, and, you know, make note of places where people could go. I mean, inside a building's difficult, but if you have outdoor public art, you know, expand that map so people can see where there's public art in other parts of the community. The reason I started with only doing the city's public art is, there was an intern probably 15 years ago that went around and did an inventory of all the public art in downtown, but we don't own all of that. And so, we ended up insuring stuff we didn't own. So, I tried to be really careful this time to make sure that this was just our stuff. But I've gotten so much feedback about, wow, there's all this other great stuff that other people own. National Park Service has stuff, the Mural Society. So, yeah, if somebody'd like to send me, you know, an inventory of the art that you've got available, we'll be happy to try to, as we expand that map.
The hallways of this administrative service center are covered in public art, with student-produced art that gets selected for the superintendent's award every year. How many years going, has that been going on? I was just thinking about how much there is out there, and how nice it would be to have it all cataloged a little better.
Well, that art, there's a difference between like, true public art and our students' art. And our, that's, the students' art is often on display down at City Hall and stuff. We get exhibitions down there-
Yeah.
... which I think is awesome for our kids to get to hang it.
Yeah.
But things like the sculptures that we have on some of our property, the Heela Heart, the Heela High installation, while it's inside, it's all glass, it's in our, in the entry and it's lit at night, it's a stunner. So, yeah, it just depends on the school. And as we're going to embark since our community passed our bond, there's going to be more art dollars coming in and stuff, so, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great if someone can get me-
Who gave me a thumbs up already?
That would be awesome.
She's all over it.
Wow, that's fast.
Yeah.
Well, I think about Vancouver, because I live, we all live on the east side because it's Evergreen Schools, but-
Right.
... is that the real geocenter of the city is east of Andurison at this point, and north of Millplain by a few blocks at very least. And the easternmost building seems to be the Firstenberg Center off 136. There's another 30, 40 blocks, maybe even longer.
The easternmost one is the East Precinct, Police Precinct on Millplain. But, but you're right, I mean, but downtown, you know-
Which is five blocks from 136.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of this, that was my question, is what is envisioned for the Firstenberg Center in connection with this, or for points towards 164th or down by Fisher's Landing?
We've not spent any time trying to delve into that, because until we know that we actually have a way to implement this plan, I mean, there's a ton of action items on here that are just, this is a concept that we should, you know, really do more on, but we haven't spent time trying to flush that out until we, we know that we have the resources to actually implement this. I told Eric, the city manager, that it was, it's really fun to work on this and all these exciting ideas, but I'm also a little discouraged because I don't want it to end up like the last plan where lots of great stuff and almost none of it got implemented. So, I think I have a lot of support in the City Council right now, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Exciting.
Any other comments or questions for Jan?
I think my last comment would be that within the bond, we actually have funding to upgrade the lighting and sound systems in our auditoriums at the high school, which I'm not sure if you were aware of that.
No.
In this last November, December, we had the lighting director from the Schnitz come over and set up LED lighting at Union High School for their play as a test demo to take a look at what we could do for energy efficiency, longevity of lights that you don't have to replace bulbs, and also enhancing the visual effect and the audio effect in those facilities. So, that should, may not happen this summer as we get some design work to do upfront, but within probably the next 18 months, Sue's nodding yes, you'll see new sound and light systems in all four of our major auditoriums.
That'll be great. No, I didn't realize that was part of the budget, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you again for your time. If you have any other comments, feel free to email me.
Yeah, thank you, Jan.
Sounds exciting.
Next on the agenda is our focus on results, and pretty exciting. We're talking about a new policy. It's a very important policy for us as a board. It's Results Policy 3, which is on social and emotional learning. And as a board, we've received a reasonable interpretation and indicators from superintendent's speech. And so, I turn it over to you, John, to give us a summary of your, of your report.
So, this is the second Result Policy section that we bring before the board for, hopefully, their approval. Most of what we've been bringing are operations expectations, where the board lays out to me as a superintendent, things I shall always do, things I shall never do, and things that the board retains authority over. This policy specifically has to do with the outcome that the board expects us to achieve with our students. So, final outcomes, as well as some major milestones along the way that we would measure to be able to hold ourselves accountable for, are we doing the job that the board hires us all to do? So, the overall policy statement is that students, under social-emotional development, which is R3, or the third section of the Results Policy, the board expects that students will integrate skills, attitudes, and behaviors to deal effectively and ethically with tasks and challenges. And there's less subsections of this than there have been in many of the OE reports that we've brought forth. Section 3.1 is students will demonstrate collaboration. And as we're looking at measuring some of the social-emotional, the two main components that we as an administration feel that we can gather data on to be able to measure student growth are the teacher scoring or assessment of student behavior at the elementary level within our elementary report card. We've verified that we have the capability from the district level to go in and pull all of that data out by student, by classroom, by grade-level department, by school, and as a district. And we can look at what percentage of students are marked at what check plus/minus, what level of that behavioral component. So, within identifying students demonstrating collaboration at the elementary, we have that for data. We also have implemented Panorama, Social, Emotional, and Cultural surveys. This week, we're just finishing up the Panorama, Social, Emotional survey. So, our students, 2nd through 9th grade, are going to be taking this survey, and we'll be able to take a look at that data, which is self-reported. So, you have the teacher observation of student behavior, and then you have the students self-reporting their own behavior in each of these categories. So, those are sort of the two main types of data that we're going to be able to collect on this. So, relative to collaboration, as an example, you've got, we'll be, we'll be tracking the percentage of elementary students who consistently participate in group activities, according to their report card. The percentage of elementary students who consistently cooperate with others is a category that the teachers score students on. Students who meet or exceed grade-level standards in speaking and listening, and also participates collaborative in the classroom discussions. So, we're already collecting that data, or generating that data at the classroom level. So, we'll now be able to collect that and share with the board a year from now, when we bring this back for monitoring, what percentage we currently are at within those areas, and then have a discussion with the board on what percentage increase do you expect us to be able to achieve with our students? And come up with that expectation, then work throughout the system to how do we provide teachers with the resources and the guidance to work with students to be able to actually come up with that social-emotional growth? Instead of passively, passively scoring how the students are behaving, we want to more proactively put things in place to be able to work with students to show that, or to create that growth. Under the Panorama survey, students will be judging their own ability to quite carefully or extremely carefully or somewhat carefully listen to other people's points of views as measured in the self-reporting on Panorama. Also, looking at percentage of students that are impacted through our professional development on personalized-centered learning. So, with the secondary, we only had that Panorama data, and we wanted to get some more data on collaboration. Eventually, what we're hoping to do is be able to gather that through teacher observation, more than just the self-reported. But in the meantime, what we're looking at is, we've been doing a lot of professional development over the last three years on personalized learning, a lot of those with creating opportunities for students to collaborate, communicate, think critically, creativity, those four Cs, 21st century skills. So, what we're going to start off with tracking is, the teachers that have had that intense training that we've provided, what are the percentage of students that are taking classes with those teachers? And as we expand that training, you would expect those percentages to go up. And eventually, we want to be able to track, transfer that over into more observable data. But because we're not already collecting that, we don't want to add a burden on the classroom teacher to start collecting that data before we come up with a better system to be able to do that. So, that's what we had under the area of collaboration. 3.2 is students will demonstrate adaptability, they will persevere with perseverance and resilience. Measurements on that, again, elementary report cards, where we're looking at students who consistently strive for quality work, who show positive attitudes towards learning, stay focused on the same goal for several months at a time, and students try again if they fail to reach an important goal. Oh, actually, I'm getting into Panorama survey. So, you've got the Panorama survey with students self-reporting if they try again, if they fail to reach an important goal. Students who believe it is quite possible to change, or completely possible to change, being talented. Students who feel they are putting forth a lot of effort, self-reported. Students who self-report behaving well in class, and students who self-report how easily they give up, and looking at that from a positive aspect. And the last one in that section is students who self-report their level of intelligence. So, ideally, to show that students can have perseverance and resilience, they'll be able to, they will feel that they are intelligent, that they can endure through these things. R3 with students will demonstrate communication, looking at, in the elementary report card, speaking and listening, where students speak effectively in conversations and presentations. And then, in the Panorama survey, students who feel they listen to other people's points of view, students who feel they can disagree with others without starting an argument, percentage of students who can stand up for themselves without putting others down. And finally, percentage of students who allow others to speak without interruption, as Section 3.4, students will demonstrate problem-solving. And we're looking at percentage of elementary students who are graded in their solve problems appropriately area by their teachers. And then, under Panorama, students who can keep working if they have a problem while working towards an important goal. And also, students self-reporting how easily they give up, and tracking that. And the last section we have under social-emotional growth is students will demonstrate self- and social awareness, looking at how well elementary students evaluate their own work, how well they take responsibility for choices, how well they respect individual differences and rights of others, and how they show respect for the ideas of others, and demonstrate concern for others, are the categories that we'll be tracking. And then, on Panorama, looking at students who can describe their feelings, and students who, when others disagree with, are respectful when others disagree with them. So, you can see, we've got, with Panorama, that is a nationally-normed survey, so we'll be able with the baseline to come back to you and let you know right off the bat how well we compare to other schools across the nation. With our elementary data, it is what it is, and that's where there's, we'll have a discussion next year on what that looks like. One of the things that we're going to be working on is trying to get a little bit better consistency. So, over time, we plan to develop a better rubric for that. And even have had discussions on adjusting these to better align with the Washington State K-12 Social-Emotional Framework and Benchmark document. And then, eventually, aligning some of our secondary expectations, if we can collect that primary data from, through observations, starting to align that with those business expectations that they would have in the areas of collaboration and getting along with others. So, like I said earlier, as a first cut, we're collecting the data we already have and getting all of this in place. And then, ideally, we'll be shifting this over and adjusting some of those data sources to better be more accurately, accurately reflect what we really want to be measuring, but hopefully do so in a way that doesn't cause a bunch of extra work for anybody, other than just us in synthesizing the data, but not in the data collection and logging. So, with this, at this time, I recommend that the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicator for the board's Results Policy, R3, Social-Emotional Learning, as presented for first reading, and move it forward for second reading and approval.
Thanks, John. At this time, I'd like to call upon the audience, if you have any questions or comments about this policy. Being done, I'll close the portion for audience question and comments, and call upon the board for a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for Board Policy R3, Social and Emotional Learning, as presented for a first reading, and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. I'll open it up to the board now for comments and questions.
I don't really have a question, maybe just more of a comment, that it'll be nice to see, kind of as a starting point, to know where we, where we are, and then kind of adjust it as we need to go.
I know this is a very challenging type of policy to have, because it's hard to measure some of these things, but I think this is a really good start, and it is worth talking about, because it's important that we address the needs of the whole child. And so, I'm glad we're embarking on it, even though it's incredibly difficult to do. And so I'm glad we're embarking on it, even though it's incredibly difficult to do.
Yeah, it's huge. Any other comments, questions?
Hard things, and just going over the framework that the state, the state law has caused to come into play here, the different standards that they've defined, I think it's from the 2016 report is the one you're talking about.
Yes.
Really suggests that the work that you're doing along these lines is going to end up leading the work they're doing a little bit, and possibly even supplying them with data that they need to refine the framework. Looking forward to seeing if that's true.
And I can share with the board, when we talk about coherence governance, or governing through policy, that the fact that you put this section in the results policy has forced us to go in and have discussions on not only how are we going to measure this, but there's things that we have just allowed to happen in the past, and it's been random acts of kindness and excellence by teachers throughout the district. But it hasn't been a concerted, coordinated effort on behalf of the district to say, if we're going to have social, emotional growth, we actually have to have curriculum to support that, that aligns with these. And those are the discussions we're having, where the board, by setting this policy, is now forcing us to go back, look at what is the curriculum, and then how are we going to fit this curriculum into everything else that we're doing, and still make it manageable at the classroom level. But eventually, this will change some of the practices that are happening between teachers and students, which is the essence of what we do.
Any other comments or questions? I have a comment, and maybe I'll throw this out to get some feedback. One thing that struck me is, over the weekend, I went to the region's solo and ensemble contests, where a lot of the musicians from our area were competing. And they were participating in this competition, and the kids were showing a lot of creativity, a lot of collaboration, and a lot of perseverance, because they were performing in front of a judge, as well as an audience. And that's exactly the type of experiences we want for our kids. And it sort of falls along with this policy. There's a lot of common language between what they're doing and what this policy is. And so I'm wondering, for kids that participate in extracurricular activities, whether it be in fine arts or athletics, because they're exhibiting this type of behavior in droves, or any other extracurricular activity, robotics, science, olympiad, you know, all of that, does it make sense to have as an indicator, beyond getting the student input in the surveys and the teacher input through grades, doesn't it make sense to have an indicator of percentage of students that are participating in extracurricular activities? I'm not sure if that makes sense for this results policy, or if it's more applicable to another results policy. So I just throw that out.
I like that thought, Todd. I think that that's important, because I think what we've seen in some of the studies that we've done as a board, that more child is active in extracurricular activities, even if it's elementary school, they learn some of those other life lessons. And so I think that's, especially as we've added more components at elementary, and have reduced participation fees. I don't know if it belongs in this.
Right. I'm not sure either.
Yeah.
And maybe it's as you're looking to the next phase of this, that that's something to think about, because we've talked about that same thing, as it just pertains to, are we getting increased participation because we've waived the fees? Do we have more children taking advantage of our after-school activities, and of that nature? So yeah, I think it's something we should definitely put in the, on the list of things to maybe think about.
About kids that are taking activities outside of the district. So those kids, we wouldn't.
Yeah.
How well they're doing in a team sport, and a lot of them are participating outside of the district.
Right.
Now, we could probably only do what percentage of kids are participating in our own activities, and do we.
Added it to a survey.
And if it took the form of a randomized survey, that just asked, do you have activities outside of school? And capture whether or not there's, for example, a child who's really involved at church, or really involved in Pop Warner, or Scouts, or stuff like that. Or you could form the question another way, and ask, do you have no activities outside of school? Count those students. It'd be a really rough indicator without some other things to triangulate against, but it's a good, it's a good thought. It's a, how involved are you? How active are you in the community? Through whatever, one form or another.
Right. Okay, so maybe, I don't know, John, did you have any thoughts about that?
My thoughts follow along, kind of the discussion you've had, is how accurate is that going to be? And, you know, we've got some kids who are working after school, or taking care of younger siblings, that don't have the opportunity to do those things. And how do you set, how do you take that into account in figuring out what's the measure or the improvement factor that we would want to have, and how do we collect it? I can't remember off the top of my head whether we asked kids during, in the panorama survey currently about after, or outside of school activities. But I wrote a couple notes down on that, and we can add that to our discussion as we continue to work through these. Originally, when Todd mentioned it to me earlier, my original thought was it fits in sort of with our elective, how are we going to measure our elective classes, and the effectiveness, and the outcomes in R2 for academic achievement in our electives? And maybe that's sort of a sub-measure of that component, but I've got some pretty smart people in the back of the room that, right now, are probably already kind of mulling through that, too. Yeah. As they all turn around and look at the back wall.
Nobody behind Bill, but.
New in the peanut gallery.
Yeah, maybe it would be more applicable there. I mean, at some point, I would like some measure for extracurricular activity participation. So.
Yeah, that's like attendance is another thing that we're trying to figure out, where are we going to put attendance in? Because we definitely want to be measuring attendance at some point, but how does it fit into these? So.
How do you measure a club's attendance when they've never before been required to take attendance? And that would kind of throw the purpose off, to do it anyway.
Or maybe even just the different types of activities in clubs, and are we expanding on that, and finding options, so. Something for you.
One of the observations that I was thinking about, listening to Todd and Vic, is that, yeah, the robotics club is connected to a competition organization whose slogan this year is, it's not a robot. It's, they really just structure an activity around the social and emotional well-being of the kids who participate. And I noticed threads of that going through all the CTSOs, and definitely through the sports teams. If they're functioning effectively, they're functioning to build a team. And so those are all avenues through which social and emotional learning can really take place. Measuring it, yeah, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah. Our other challenge is, as we get into these, we're kind of going through and almost formulaically looking at the individual bullet items, and trying to figure out how do we measure those. But at some point, we need to kind of step back and look at the big picture and figure out, have we really measured everything that we want to be measuring and being held accountable for? And there's a couple things, like attendance, that kind of got thrown in here, and at some point, we're going to have to say, where is attendance going to fit? Because it's got to fit somewhere. And if it does.
You're talking regular school attendance, not attendance.
Right, I'm talking regular school attendance. So this is one of those things that I would say, from a big picture, we want to make sure we capture. But right now, as we're focusing in on R4, R3, R2, there's things that might fall in the cracks, that we're going to have to capture later.
Okay. That makes sense. Any other comments or questions? Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Let's take a vote. We're talking about the first reading for R3, which is the social, emotional learning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so for first reading, the reasonable interpretation and indicators have been approved, and we'll bring it forward at our next board meeting for a second reading and approval. So thanks, John. Next is monitoring district operations, and we're talking about OE10, which is learning environment. In this case, we're talking about the second reading for the reasonable interpretation and indicators. So I'll hand it over to you, John.
And with OE10, the overall learning environment, the main overall arching statement is that the superintendent shall establish and maintain a learning environment that is equitable, personalized, flexible, responsive, safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. Last, or two weeks ago, I presented this in detail. Since that time, have had no comment from the board, staff, or the public. So based upon that, will not read it again. And at this time, I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectation. OE10 learning environment is presented for second reading and approval.
John, comments from the audience, or questions? Okay, seeing none, I guess I'll close the portion about audience comments and questions, and I'll take a motion from the board.
I recommend the board accept the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectation OE10, learning environment, as presented for second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. What kind of questions and comments do you have as a board?
I got all my questions answered at the.
No, we know like most of the other policies, this is a first round of data gathering, and I was happy with our discussion last time.
One thing that strikes me is, part of this policy has to do with school safety, right? And that's been a big discussion since our last board meeting and our last discussion about it. So I'm really glad we're talking about this policy and talking about indicators, because you have here, you know, gathering information about school-wide discipline data, which I think is very important for us to be able to have and to monitor. So I appreciate this policy even more, in light of the events of the last few days. Other comments or questions? Hey, it's been moved and seconded. I guess we'll take a vote. Let's see, if you approve, I guess, the second reading for OE10, learning environment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've approved the reasonable interpretation and indicators for OE10, learning environment. Next, we have matters reserved for board action. The first thing we have is OE12, and we're talking about a second reading for revision, a slight revision to this policy. So, John?
Yeah, during some policy reviews, came across the policy, the district operations policy for naming of facilities, and remembered a conversation I had had with the board, so recommended to the board that we modify this to include naming of facilities within this policy as a right reserved by the board. So I brought it back to you for first, brought this to you for first reading at the last meeting. Nobody has said that you shouldn't get to name facilities in the last two weeks. So with that, I recommend that the board adopts the revision of board policy OE12 facilities to include the board retaining the right to name buildings.
Thanks, John. Any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Recommend the board adopts the revision to board policy OE12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board?
Bond has passed. We might have a chance to name a few buildings, right?
Oh, it passed? All right. Didn't you know?
Hopefully, we do a better job at that than we did our bowling team.
Naming our bowling team? Okay.
No, the good news is, is we always have a committee, and kids are, students are on it, and they always come up with good suggestions, so we're safe.
That's been a district practice since I was in middle school, a long, long time.
Other comments? I'll now take a vote. So if you're in favor of the second reading, to approve the revision for OE10, signify by saying aye.
OE12. Aye.
Did I say the wrong policy name?
Yeah, it's OE12.
OE12, yes. OE12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the revision to OE12 has been approved. Thank you.
I thought of that as a substantive correction.
Thank you. Next, we have the second reading for the school calendar. So the board has received the proposed school calendar. We've talked about it at our last board meeting. John, can you give us a summary and any updates?
Like I said, like you said, I presented this two weeks ago. I haven't heard any comments. It would have us, starting before Labor Day on a Tuesday, so that's one day earlier. We would have spring break the same time, first full week of April, the full week off for students in November, two full weeks in December, including three weekends, and the last day of school on June 13th. And then some other snow makeup day things, which I hope unlike this year and last year, that we don't have to deal with next year. So with that, and there's nothing that's come from the legislature at this time that would lead me to believe that we would change this. So at this time, I recommend the board adopts the student school calendar for 2018-19 as presented.
Thanks, John. Any comments from the audience? Hey, seeing none, I'll take a motion from the board.
I move the adoption of the student school calendar for 2018 and 19 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by someone. Any comments from the board?
I got all my questions answered last time, and seeing that there hasn't been any back to on since that last meeting, I'm.
Wondered if there was any second thoughts, in light of last week's weather?
No.
Okay.
Related to what, like, snow makeup days?
I actually appreciate the fact that we moved the February date to March next year. It would have been nice, so we wouldn't be bumping up the last day of school to Friday right now, with the worry that if anything happens between now and then, we have to go to a Monday for the last day of school.
That the day, like, after, our last snow makeup day, it snowed.
A lot less next year.
We've seen a lot of late February snow in the last several years, so I think it's becoming more of a norm.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll now take a vote to approve, or to adopt the school calendar for 2018-19 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the school calendar for next year has been adopted. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, oh, board consent agenda. So we're here to approve, I guess it's just the minutes from our regular board meeting from February 13th, right? So is there a motion?
I move that we approve the board consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's passed. Superintendent's consent agenda. Any comments about it? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I move for adoption of, or approval of the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. Next, we have the good news report, and I believe Gail Spohler will be making the presentation.
Sorry, I'm commuting.
You didn't want to sit in the front row, huh?
Well, I have to be by the video.
Oh, I see.
Good evening. This is your good news for February. Even though it's a short month, and we did have a snow day and a late start, we still have plenty of good news. There's a picture, it actually is better online than it is here in the print version, but this is the Frontier Middle School eighth-grade basketball team. Along with their managers and coaches, they spent an evening at the Clark County Food Bank, and they packed over 46 pounds, or 4,600 pounds of food for families in need. And the coaches said that the students really enjoyed the experience, and it gave them a positive example, and set the bar high for others in their school to give back to the community. And in that vein, Philip Meng, a junior at Union High School, has been named one of the Washington, of Washington State's top two youth volunteers for 2018. He was recognized in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, and as one of our state honorees, he will receive a $1,000 award, and an all-expense paid trip back to Washington, DC to be honored. Again, in the vein of honoring, two of our football players, Riley Miller, a senior at Union High School. Union High School, earned a $3,500 scholarship, while Mitchell Delmash, a senior at Mountainview, earned a $2,500 scholarship as part of the annual Scholar-Athlete Awards banquet at the Clark County chapter of the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame. For the past month, Illahi Elementary has been celebrating Black History Month. They had a variety of different ways that they celebrated the month. They created posters, they watched videos, they had a game tournament, and then they also had an assembly which featured an interview with two members of our community who are grandparents of students who are at Illahi, and they were able to talk about their experience growing up during the civil rights movement. Also in February, the Lakota Wolves, the Heritage High School Game Design Club, hosted an hour of code for girls with a local Girl Scout troop. Software provided by code.org as a way to help girls learn the beginning stages of computer programming. They're also gearing up for their game competition. They are one of two schools in the district that will travel over to Oregon and participate in this. And I think many of you know Megan Baxter. She's a teacher at Union High School. She's been part of the ASB leadership group out there advising those students for the last several years, and she was recently named the Washington State High School Advisor of the Year. And so she'll be formally honored next month at the Annual Conference of Washington Activity Coordinators in Kenillic. And of course, I can't go without mentioning, once again, the annual bowling tournament. We have the final tally, $2,000 to benefit Evergreen Citizens for Schools, a number of corporate donations, raffle prizes. We had a number of folks give generously to that. And I just, I'm trying to remember who the winning team might be.
Whoa, EEA.
Pick up the trophy, yeah? Okay. I heard it's going on like the Stanley Cup, people...
My goodness.
That's good, huh?
Congratulations.
So yes, Evergreen Education Association claimed top honors in the bowling tournament.
Teachers win.
So they have breaking rights for another 11 months, so there you go. There's the good news report.
Yeah, thanks, Gail.
Gail? I just did want to confirm that, because we talked about Illahi and their Black History Month activities, but we saw, we had stuff across all the schools. I'm just, I know it's more related to who sends you the information so that you can put it, but I wanted to make sure that people were aware that it wasn't just one school, that there was a lot of stuff going on.
Illahi has had a long tradition of participating at the elementary level, but, and Dr. Stich knows more about all of the pieces that have gone on throughout the district, including that presentation at Evergreen High School that was sponsored by one of our student-led groups that had a number of wonderful guest speakers that I know some of you attended as well. Right, we don't have a full listing of this because it really is dependent on the school sending us in and giving us the specific. But Illahi has a student-led group that put this together.
And now we'll have a budget update from Chief Operating Officer, Mike Merlino. Mike?
And I'm doing some research, and I think April is School Finance History Month.
Really? Wow.
I'm just doing some checking on that. If I can verify that, I'll report back on that as well.
Let us know.
Yeah.
The most boring act...
You can do a presentation for us.
Yeah, actually, I think that there's a student-led group at Riverview that's really interested in that, so we'll maybe wait until we hear...
It's recognized during the week of spring break, isn't it? Is that why we've never heard of it?
Yes, I think it might be somewhere in that timeframe.
April 1st, got it. In the calendar.
You guys finally got it. Two documents updated. Really, all we have updated here on the first is just enrollment. Enrollment, the trends have been better in elementary, kind of worse in the secondary, in the high school in particular. Overall, not significant changes from what we've, what we've seen throughout the year. But certainly, as we are working on the budget for next year, we're looking at the experience of this year in building the enrollment and anticipating enrollment reductions again as we look at next year. So we, this particular year, we have had issues with enrollment and the impact on the finances of the district. We kind of got a break this year with the waiver of the K3 rules, which helped offset that and got us through this year. But certainly important for us to be all over as we're building the budget next year and for next year, and we'll be talking about that as we get deeper into this school year. Nothing really significant changing. You can see all of the negatives in terms of budget to annual difference enrollment-wise, and that is something that we, that needs to be better next year, and it will be. The second page, really, I would, I would just mention that we're still estimating that the fund balance should be about break even for the 17-18 school year. So we've, we had the enrollment reduction. We have the K3, the fact that they suspended the rules helped us out. The last piece this year that we're kind of waiting on, that's pretty important, is the state in the, in the budget this last session increased, they put in a supplemental allocation for transportation. We're one of the districts in the state that's been historically, and we'll review that in April, the, we've historically been underfunded in transportation. And so for two years, they allocated an additional $9 million to help with those districts. So OSPI, the Transportation Office, they've, they've done their initial allocation, but they haven't distributed this $9 million to be distributed statewide. I think we are the largest underfunded district in the state. And so at the end of March, we'll see what that number is and then how that impacts us. So that's kind of the last piece that we need to, I expect we'll get favorable news there, but we, it's the first year they've ever done, they're looking at how efficient the district is, what is the cost per rider, they're looking at a number of different variables that we believe have historically, again, back to his, school finance history. Historically, we've been really positive in, so I think it's going to be a good thing for us, but I just mentioned that because that is one last piece of the, of the puzzle that's quite important, and we won't know until the end of March. We'll talk a little bit more about the legislature, but it seems as if, at the workshop, it seems as if they will be getting their work done in time and, hopefully, well. But we're still kind of status quo right now. Have a little, when we get back together in School Finance History, month of April, we'll talk more about that, what we, our actual number is at the end of April, or at the end of March, the transportation. That's all I have.
Questions for Mike? I have a question. On the unreserved fund balance, the original budget had like 5.34%, and now it looks like the estimate would be 4.94%. And that's what we try to stay about 5%, right? I'm just wondering what the difference is.
It is, and what, we will make sure that we don't go below 5%. We, if you look at the bottom on the right there, in the middle, with all the different restrictions for the different things, assigned to other purposes in particular, the $7,841, that's one that we have a little bit of an ability to move dollars around if need be. So I was trying to reflect that I think it's going to be a break-even year. I wasn't real focused on that. I'm not concerned about meeting the 5% fund balance reserve the board has outlined.
Okay, great. Thanks. Next, we have superintendent's update. John?
So a couple things to report. As everybody knows, we had a snow day last week. We did something different than what the district has done in the past with an early, potential early release day on Thursday. Rather than just closing because of the two-hour delay, we canceled the early release day. We did the same on Friday so that we could keep our conferences together, since those were conference days. And just to let you know that we've rescheduled those conferences for March 8th and 9th. So they will be coming up next week with early release on both of those days, and we got that communication out yesterday to people. Another weather impact was that Rebecca Sklute's flight got delayed, and she did not make it to Hila, so sorry about that. Some year, we will actually get her there.
Do you plan to reschedule, or does it just depend on...
I think she still came, she just couldn't get here early enough for that, because she was flying in on Tuesday.
She has family here, so she...
So hopefully, now that she's shown an interest in coming when she's in town, hopefully the next time she's in town, we'll be able to work something out. I had Todd join us for our audit in briefing in honor of School Finance History Month.
Oh, so that's what that was? I didn't realize.
Yes, so we are having our annual financial audit, and so have that in-briefing meeting, and once the audit's done, we'll be presenting those findings to the board, and that'll be part of our OE monitoring too, is sharing with you those audit findings. This last weekend, I got to attend the dedication of two new Habitat Homes for Habitat for Humanity that were constructed by Evergreen and Mountainview High School. So great accomplishment for those schools and an unbelievable partnership. Our kids not only seeing how math applies to careers in real world and real life, but giving back to the community at the same time. With a lot of the concern over school safety and response by students with potential walkouts, I did send some talking points out to our administrative staff this morning, and we'll be working to put together something to put out to the community next week, specific to how the district will respond to the upcoming potential walkouts by students. So just to give you a heads up on that, I expect to hopefully get that out around next Wednesday to parents and all staff. And kind of last thing, did you know we passed the bond?
Yes.
It is certified. We've been already kicking off with meetings, putting schedules together, figuring out bond sale schedules. We've got an RF queue out for construction management support, and I've got sections in my calendar now blocked out to start moving forward on that. Sue's working on all the forms to get into the states, so things are off and running, and we've already got, Sue's got a whole list of things that we're going to be kicking off this summer. So the things that don't take a lot of detailed engineering design work are things that we should be able to jump right into this summer, but some, even some of those other things that the schools that aren't being replaced, may take about a year to be able to get those things underway. But we've got a lot of activity going on, so that's what I've got.
Thanks, John. I did hear about that bond election. Let's see, time for board comments. What comments do we have?
Well, just to tag on to John's comments regarding the bond, I, I just would like to publicly thank our community for the support of the bond. It's a testimony to how our community supports our schools, and so very, very happy about that. And I want to thank all the people that worked on, worked on the bond and were out there knocking on doors and doing all the legwork and, and all of that. It was a really good effort, and the social media presence was amazing. So, yeah, it was a good, it was a good... Press this time.
I was really impressed with the informational campaign material that went out and the way that it was disseminated to a point where in another context, I was using those videos as an example of what community engagement videos could look like. And I'm also very appreciative of the efforts, like you said, of the community and the advocacy that came from Evergreen Citizens for Schools and their leadership there. I had a conversation with Kristi Brown-Silva, who's co-president, and asked her if she was keeping busy during the campaign, and she said everything, that she had enough participation and enthusiasm from others, that the workload really was a lot lighter than at the last campaign. So thank you to everyone who waved signs and participated and advocated and made it possible for us to replace these old facilities like Sifton, Ellsworth, and turn them into something better for learning.
I actually did the tour with John and a couple of others. Was, and yes, that school definitely needs to be replaced. It's the first time I've actually been to Sifton. I've passed it almost daily for the last couple of years, but going into that school, we were actually in one specific class that every time the heater, I assume it was supposed to be a heater, would kick on, I had to get up and move because it was blowing out cold air, and it was actually kind of cold. So it was, when the teachers are in the classroom with their coats on, you know it's time to re... So I'm happy about that bond, too.
Yeah. I guess my comments echo what you've been talking about. I mean, my hat's off to all the volunteers for Evergreen Citizens for Schools. I mean, a tremendous job by the community to help get that bond passed. And in particular, I wanted to have a shout-out to the, the co-presidents of the campaign, which were Kristi Brown-Silva and Tanisha Harris. They just did a fantastic job. So thank you as well. Next, we have, let's see, any future agenda items to bring up? None? Okay, so we are at the time of recess for us to sign some papers, and after recess, we'll be reconvening in a workshop to talk about OE3, which is Community Stakeholder Relationships. We'll be talking about OE8, which is community or communicating with and support for the board. We'll have a board meeting debrief, we'll have a legislative update, we'll have a superintendent's update. Oh, and then we're not having the WASD Open Meeting training, right? Because the...
Correct.
Okay, so we'll be ending with a superintendent's update. So we are now in recess. Thank you.